Thank you. Sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. At this point, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. This would be the time for individuals to speak. If there were public comments, I have no items on the agenda. I have no cards. And therefore, we will move to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have two closed session items this evening. One for the airport authority is property, real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. And the property is hangar 681 at the airport. The negotiating parties are Mr. Metzler and Pratt Whitney. And the second item is existing litigation for the city council pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. And it's City of Victorville versus First Assembly of God, case number CIVVS 103650. To the extent there's reportable action, we'll report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the seven o'clock meeting.
There are no questions or comments from the council. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:00 PM and we're going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please. Oh, wait a minute. Do we have the closed session announcement before or after?
We can do the roll call first.
I'd appreciate it.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. The, we went to closed session earlier, and the city attorney will now make the announcements regarding the closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We went into closed session for two items that are set forth on the agenda. One was for the airport authority, the other was for the city council. One was real estate negotiations, the other concerned existing litigation. And at this point, there is no reportable action with respect to either item.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask that the invocation be given by Pastor Dr. Dexter Kilpatrick, Spirit of Christ Tabernacle in Victorville, and remain standing after the invocation for the pledge of allegiance by our police chief, Sam Lucia. I guess I should have asked, is Dr. Dexter Kilpatrick here? In that case, ladies and gentlemen, if you'd bow, please. First of all, thank God that we live in a country where we can attend and watch our government officials make the decisions for the public, so that they will maybe be held accountable. And in sitting here and making the decisions, all of us ask your blessings, your guidance, and your help on making the best decisions for the greatest number of people in this room. Help us in doing, making the right decisions and doing the right thing. We ask that you give guidance to us, and we ask that you give guidance to all the individuals that are here, and bless them and thank them for attending this meeting and helping us in having this council meeting. Thank you for being here, and amen. Sam Lucia, please.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, who is one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and pure.
We have a presentation, as most of you are aware. The City of Victorville is very involved in the military banner. We used to have them prominently hanging here, and I think we have had some time before we've had the presentation. But tonight, we have a very, very special presentation, and I'm going to read this. And before I start, I'd like Bradley Peterson to come up here and stand right here. And I'm going to read this, so bear with me, please. Since the program's inception in 2007, the Victorville City Council has honored 102 hometown heroes who have gone off to Iraq or Afghanistan. The banners are first unveiled, the banners were first unveiled, at council meeting before being displayed on light poles along Civic Drive, Kentwood Avenue, and the parking lot. And I'm sure all of you are familiar with those and have seen them on the street. The program is funded through sponsorships from the community. Some of the businesses sponsoring include Victorville Aerospace, American GI Forum, Fast Signs, formerly High Tech Signs, Desert Community Bank, Downey Savings, Costco, TXI Riverside Cement, Victor Valley Federal Credit Union, and Southwest Gas. A number of local residents have also donated toward this respected program. And I'm not reading, but I want to interrupt and say, we want to thank all of those individuals very, very much. The banners are, we are presenting this evening, sponsored by Blue Star Properties. Thank you, Blue Star. Is there a representative here from Blue Star? Yes, there you are. Thank you. And we hope that the business community will be reminded of this opportunity to contribute to a very deserving cause while honoring Victorville's military population. If you're interested in sponsoring a soldier's banner, you can contact the city's website or talk to Monica Peterson for more information. Encourage you to do that. Tonight, we honor and welcome home an Army soldier born and raised in Victorville. After graduating from Victor Valley College, he went on to earn a bachelor's degree in business administration and a master's degree in teaching before volunteering to go to Afghanistan. I'm proud to welcome home and introduce Sergeant Bradley Peterson.
My name is Brad Peterson. It's after today became Staff Sergeant Bradley Peterson. I was promoted. I grew up here in Victorville, and it's been a growing city. It's been amazing seeing all the changes. Proud to be here, proud to, great place to grow up. We're a fifth-generation family, so I've been around a while. This is my first deployment. I was deployed to Kandahar. I helped with a post office. And you see every day, people sending in goodies, and that's like the happiest thing that we see out there. So, thank you very much. This has been an amazing, for the council members, the mayor, thank you very much for putting this on, Monica for managing it. Blue Star Properties, thank you guys very much for sponsoring it. I was able to see this live. Actually, I wasn't able to see it live. I tried to see it live, the web stuff out there. For about two minutes, it took me about 30 minutes to watch it, but it was worth every minute. So, thank you, guys, for being able to hold the live, and the live feeds. That's awesome. I'm glad, I'm really glad to be home. It's, I left more proud of my country than ever before, just seeing how we're doing good things out there. And even though it's kind of crazy, it's like, ah, we're doing, it's good. The people are glad we're there, and it's not going to be good when we leave, but hopefully it'll be okay. And just real quick, wanted to say thank you very much to the council members. Mayor, thank you very much. Monica, thank you very much. Blue Star, you guys are awesome. And I'd say that's a wrap.
It, this is a, the banner program is a program initiated by the council. I don't know who ultimately was responsible for suggesting it and initiating it, but we're really happy to be a part of that. And I know the community is rather proud of it, and we always like to honor these young men. We all owe a debt of gratitude to them. At this point in time, we have the public comment section. We have a lot of cards for the agenda item later. And this is the public comment section. At this time, I have about six cards. I'm going to call you up in the order that I received those. And so, the first individual, you have three minutes. Please stay within the time limits. Hakeem Majel Jr.
I figure I bring Junior up, too, because he's probably next. Good evening, councilmembers and honorable mayor. I am, as you know, a member of the Community Services Advisory Committee, and I wanted to share with you the great time that we had, me and my family, at the Easter egg hunt and carnival this past Saturday. It was amazing. We had a lot of people show up. It was really, really nice. The staff did an excellent job, the community services staff. I want to definitely give them a good shout out. They did an excellent job managing the crowds, picking up trash, having, engaging the people. It was an amazing event. You guys would have been, I know you're proud. I know you're proud. And not signaling out, no, well, I'm going to just let everybody know that I especially want to give a special shout out to Glenn Salas, the manager of Recreation Division. I saw him literally walk every booth, like two, three hours, picking up trash. This guy was nonstop. So, he did an excellent job, and I want you to know that. The second thing is, I haven't had a chance to, a couple of months ago, I spoke and I congratulated Mr. McEckern on the heating thing for the fall, excuse me, for the winter. And I want to congratulate you publicly, and thank you for that. And I want to offer my assistance and I'll offer your help, because I want to see what we could do to put a restroom, maybe the porta potters or something, in Old Town. I know that I addressed the council in the past about people not having a restroom spot to use, and so I thought it would be a good thing to maybe have one restroom over there for the people who really need it. And so, if you would like to work with me, I'd appreciate your help. Carol Lee has my contact information, and I thank you.
Thank you. Now, you want to reserve time for both you and your son, or you speak for the family?
If you want him to go ahead and just go next to the mayor, that'd be fine with me.
Pardon?
If you want my son to go ahead and go next, that would be fine with me.
Well...
Or if you want to do it in the order.
Order, I received them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I'm thinking that at the Easter thing that I was talking about, we had a real fun time, but I think they should expire the time. Expand the time, like to five, because it was only an hour, and a lot of people were having fun. I could see that, and I saw some of my friends there. So, yeah, just thinking you should expand it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Yvonne Mashick. If I didn't get that correct, my apologies.
Good evening. I'm here again to talk to you about the library, that I'd like, I know you're supposed to be trying to build one, but I'd like you to try to maybe move to a different area. That street is terrible. I mean, you see that the building next to it is burnt down. It's a very dangerous situation. The lighting is bad, the staff is afraid, and most of the patrons are, too. So, I'm asking you to please try to find a different location for our library. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Larry Huber.
Good evening, mayor and councilpeople, persons. Another medical marijuana on Union Street, one half a block from the high school, across the street from the worst trailer park in Victorville for drugs. Opened up yesterday. We have two within 600 feet from my shop. Where are we going? And I know this is legislation coming down, but we got four or five in Old Town, and they were doing drugs on my street today. Some car was wheeling backwards and doing some deals. Where's this going? We've got to do something. I'm trying to rent a building next to an 8,000-square-foot building, a warehouse. Where's the zoning for these things? I mean, I'm on the planning commission for a long time. Most places have to be in a zoned area. Can't we zone these places somewhere or do something to get them out of every place in Victorville? That's all you see on a Friday and Saturday night, marijuana shops. It's unbelievable what's happening out there. I am ashamed of Old Town, the way it's going. And again, I own a whole block down there, and to have marijuana shops down there doing that with an 8,000-square-foot building, just is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huber. Brian Rhodes?
Yeah, hi. We're having a rash of air conditioning units, and some of our vacant homes getting broken into a lot. And we've come to the conclusion that part of the problem with getting responses from the police department is that they're down to only one service vehicle. And for the non-emergency calls, to have to send out the regular sheriff's deputies is taking them away from the emergency calls that we do have in our area. And it's really difficult for us, you know, to constantly have to come up with the money to replace all these units and to replace all the damage of the vacant homes that we have that are getting broken into on a daily basis. When we have to sit around and wait four hours to two days to get an officer to come out and take a report, just so that we could, you know, have our insurance companies pay for it, it's getting really hard on a lot of us financially in this business. And I'm hoping that you guys would really consider on your nuts, on your next budget that, and your next agendas, that you would look towards the Victorville Police Department and seeing what you can do to add at least three to four more service vehicles to handle these non-emergency calls, so that we could have our officers actually responding to the emergencies and not taking them away from where we need them to be. Because the city is really getting rough now that, you know, it's summertime, and the weather's getting better, the criminals are really coming out, and with AB 109, we're really getting screwed over. So, we really need some help from you guys to please, if you would reconsider, you know, on your next budget, adding some service personnel to the sheriff's department. It would really help us.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. And the last is, I believe it's Luanne Lefleur.
Good evening, mayor and city councilmembers. I was here a month ago, whoops, about there was a problem with some stray dogs in the neighborhood. We have tried working with animal control. Christian has been very good. You all have spent lots of money on traps that do not work, because they will not set it off if I crawl into it. I'm not a little person. There's still one dog out there. Just to let you know, if animal control needs food, somebody can call me, and I'll donate it. Or how do I donate food to them? Because they came out, they put the trap out on the sixth. On the seventh, the supervisor called my husband and said, "We're not allowed to put food out, we're not allowed to put water out, otherwise, we're never going to catch these dogs." We caught one, we placed it in the pen, and you all came out and got it. The other one is still there to this day. And then, on March 18th, new food was put in the trap. It was reset. It was a Monday. The trap was taken away on the 28th with the same can of food still in it. I'm not allowed to go out there and put cans of food in it to try to catch these animals, but your officers went from Monday through the weekend till the following Thursday, and there's still not been any food out there. So, now, therefore, the neighbors, we are trying to catch the dog ourself. Animal Control will not call us back. I talked to them last Thursday. They'd call me on Monday, and we'll decide if we need to get the trap out there. Maybe we can work with this young dog and try to get it friendly enough, to get a collar on it, get a rope on it, you know, something, to do something with it. Nothing. I know it's short of manpower. There's only four of them for all of Victorville. That I can understand. But whenever they're supposed to be catching dogs and animals, and they don't even come out and check the traps, we're not allowed to do anything about the traps, and they leave food out there for that long. If the food is that short, then I think the community should know, and a group of us will get together and donate. So, I'd like somebody to let me know how to donate cases worth, because obviously, it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the cards that I have. I have more cards. Did I have any? That's the cards to speak at this time. Do want to make this comment, so all everyone will understand. The city council cannot discuss an item that's not on the agenda. That would be discussing an item where the reason that they're agendized is so the public will know what we're going to discuss, so all members of the public can come and be a participant. If it's not on the agenda, we do not discuss it. And therefore, I, people come and speak and then wonder why we don't engage in debate or answer questions. We cannot, by law. I want everyone to understand that. However, when you do contact the staff, or we get your emails, or we get your letters, they are forwarded to the staff, and a lot of times, people come and speak, and the items are already being looked at by the staff. But if, for some reason, you don't feel that you were heard, call City Hall, call Animal Control, call the Sheriff's Department. Send us an email. We make sure we get it to the right staff people. Thank you for participating in this section, segment of the city council meeting. The city clerk, do we have revisions to the agenda?
Yes, we do, Mayor Cox. On the dais and available to the public concerning item number 10, there are two revisions. There is a letter that has been received from the Building Industries Association, Baldi Mesa Chapter. And there is also additional information that has been provided by staff showing an analysis of the connection fees. Item number seven, which appears on the Joint Powers Finance Authority agenda, should also be considered at the same time by the city council upon advice of the city attorney. And that is concerning the BNP Paribas Letter of Credit Extension. And those are all the revisions.
I'm sorry. Item number seven, what?
That is an item that's on the Joint Powers Finance Authority agenda. But per the advice of the city attorney, this should also be acted upon by the city council at the same time. It does not appear on the city council's agenda, but it should be acted upon by both entities.
Is seeking a consent to the extension of a letter of credit, and it's technically the city, while the city's a member of the Joint Powers Authority, it's technically the city that'll execute the extension if you should approve it. So, I just want the city council to take action on it at the same time as the Joint Powers Finance Authority.
All right. When I get to item seven under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, just remind me, and it'll be understood by the city council. Are there any other additions or deletions or changes?
There are not.
At this time, we are going to call to order the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. There are no items for the Library Board. There are no items posting for the Logistics Rail Authority. There's no items. I'm sorry. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, agenda item number four for the council.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 5, request to approve amendment number one to the General Service Provider Agreement with Scorpion Fire Protection for Project ES-12-042 Fuel Farm Fire Suppression System, annual certification and repairs at SCLA in the amount not to exceed $31,358.93.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Successor agency to the RDA, no items of posting at this time. Joint Powers Financing Authority. Item number six is a request to adopt Resolution Number JPFA-13-001, entitled, and by the way, the companion item, city council meeting item 17, we will take this at the same time. A resolution of the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority conditionally approving and authorizing the executive director to execute the non-disturbance recognition and attorney agreement between Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the city, and back Infra Trust... Speaking of non-disturbance, ACHT, CHB, and Company KG LLC relating to a cell tower lease in Liberty Park, and further authorizing the executive director to execute additional
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Victorville Water District.
Mr. Mayor, that was a companion item to the council also.
That's correct.
One item, one vote, I care of both, as I understand.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Item number eight is a public hearing from the Victorville Water District.
Excuse me, Mayor Cox. Mayor, item seven needs to be acted upon.
I'm sorry.
And this is the one that requires you to act as well on behalf of the city council.
Well, that's why I missed it. I was going to combine it with the other one. So, item number seven, and it'll be an action of the city council.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Mayor Protem, may I get a vote from you? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
We are... We are, if I lost you, my apologies. We're on the Victorville Water District, the public hearing, item number eight. And the companion item is the City Council, item number 13. It's a public hearing, here are your arguments for and against the adoption of Resolution Number VVD-13-001. Would you want to read that resolution, Madam Clerk?
A joint resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, and the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District, adopting policies for the administration of customer accounts associated with the billing and collection of rates, fees, and charges for water, recycled water, storm drainage, solid waste, and wastewater utility services, and superseding Resolution Number 12-012 and Resolution Number VWD-12-002, Sections 4B, 5, and 6.
These are just administration policies, not fee issues or rates or anything like that?
This is not a rate increase. What we did with the water rates in total was split them into three parts. This is more about the administrative fee, excuse me, the administrative procedures for billing. It does add a couple of fees specifically for service deactivation for non-pay, as well as a backflow test and some things that we didn't have a fee in place for, but it's not an increase to the rates in any way. That goes for both the Water District as well as for the city charges as well, the companion item on the sewer. Thank you.
At this point in time, are there any other questions before I open the public hearing? We could do it before or after. We normally open the public hearing and then have questions, but we can have those before. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who wants to speak on those two items? I have no cards. I see someone approaching the dais. I'm going to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, questions?
I have a question. You mentioned that there are some administrative fees. Can you tell us what those are?
Yes. It says in your agenda, additional administrative charges have been listed. These include service deactivation for non-pay, backflow test, annual backflow administration and certification maintenance, and fire flow test results.
How much are we talking when you say fee?
Mr. McGee, do you have the detail on that?
Yes, I do. The initial customer setup fee is $25. This is all listed, by the way, on page 176 of the agenda package. Non-reporting on the flow meter, that's $38 per occurrence. Service call, regular hours, $32. And after hours is $48. Deactivation for non-pay is $64.
Okay. I think my question is, what is the difference? How much did it go up?
There was no increase to the admin fees. There were some fees that were charged at cost that we have now a fixed fee for relating to backflow testing, fire flow testing. Those never had a fixed fee. Those were just, some of them were actually not charged at all, and some of them were charged at cost.
So, this list on 5.03 that you list here?
Yes.
These have never been charged for before?
No. Some of them are a standard fee that gets repeated, like the initial customer setup fee, the returned payment fee, and the administrative lien processing fee. Those were all in effect before.
So, what was the increase on those?
There is no increase.
Oh, so they were always the same?
Those three were always there. Some of the other fees were not in place before. For example, backflow testing was something that was a new state mandated requirement. We had to adopt an ordinance to be able to enforce it, and part of the requirement is to do backflow testing and annual certification, and there was no fees in place for that. We've now been doing it for long enough that we know how much it costs, and now we're establishing a fee for doing that.
Okay. And are these fees that you have listed here, are they comparable to other agencies' fees?
We didn't do a comparison of the administrative fees with other agencies, no.
But you did the study on what it charges, what our city charges, and the cost that it is?
Yes.
And that study is, is that study provided in here?
I don't believe we have that in the agenda package, no.
I'd like to see it. I would.
You know, I would like to see that, and I would also, would like to see if it's comparable to other agencies.
Okay.
So, I guess I would make a motion if we could table this item until next time, that we could get those items from staff?
Is this an issue of fees, or is it just an issue of policies?
It's both.
Yes.
It's both. It's standardizing policies and putting in some fees that previously weren't required and/or were calculated in a different manner.
We have two items, two actions. We can go ahead and approve it, but if we find out later that we're not happy with it, want to change it, we'd have to back up and undo this. If our individuals agree with Councilmember Vias that we continue this until we see the study, or we can proceed. You made a motion to continue?
To continue to get the study as well as to see if we're comparable with other surrounding cities or agencies.
I would recommend that that motion then also include reopening the public hearing and continuing the public hearing, just for purposes of formality.
Okay. So, the motion would be to continue the matter, continue the public hearing. We'd reopen the public hearing at a later time if we get the information back. So, there's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. I don't have the thing on the screen.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern.
The call for the vote?
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number nine.
Mr. Mayor, item nine, staffs requesting this be continued to the April 16 council meeting. It may be appropriate to open the public hearing, not taking Andre's job away from him. I knew he was going to say that.
I, that was what I intended to do. I think we're required to open the public hearing, even though we're going to continue it. Isn't that correct?
You have a choice of either opening it and continuing it or re-noticing it, but I would recommend...
I would open the public hearing, and it will be continued at the conclusion of the public hearing until the next meeting, two weeks from now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I will open the public hearing on agenda item number nine. I have no cards on the matter. No one's objecting. We will continue this matter until, Madam Clerk, what's the date?
That would be April 16.
April 16, 7:00 PM in these chambers. Thank you. Item number 10. This is a public hearing called here, arguments for and against the adoption of Resolution Number VVD-13-003 entitled, "A Resolution of the Victorville Water District Establishing Charges for Water Service Connection Fees and Charges," fees and charges, and superseding Resolution Number VWD-12-002, Section 7. I have one card. We have any questions before I open the public hearing from the councilmembers? Any questions of staff?
Yes. I have a question on this. You know, I understand how important to keep up with the rate adjustments, you know, are to cities and agencies, being that at the agency I work for didn't receive a rate increase for over 14 years, and it was pretty devastating to the agency and very difficult to have to come back and ask for large sums to the public, and it's just, it's just too hard on the customer. And, but I do have a question. What are the capital expenses versus the revenues since the last user rate adjustment that we've received?
Just to clarify one thing first, thank you for recognizing that. Actually, the previous councils have given direction to staff to try to keep up with the small rate increases on an annual or biannual basis, just because waiting so long ends up with a need for an enormous rate increase. It's very, very much unpalatable. Mr. McGee, do you have information regarding the capital expenses that Councilmember Vias is asking about?
No. Your question is, since the last rate increase, what have the capital expenditures versus the revenues from connections?
So, that, you know, I can kind of justify any kind of adjustments right now. I mean, if, obviously, we have a lot of, at my agency, we have a lot of compliance issues that require a lot of capital improvement projects. You have a lot of that coming up in the agency. I didn't see a CIP plan in here, and I want to know and just feel a little bit better about approving a rate increase. I want to make sure that it's needed and that we're just not compiling cash.
The City Council's action in 2010 was based upon a study that was done by the same company that prepared the master plan for the Water District, Corolo. They developed the connection fee study, which recommended a rate increase, and that was adopted then in 2010. Since that, there has been a deferment of the application of an inflation factor, the Consumer Price Index, which was also approved by the City Council as part of the adoption of the resolution for that rate increase in 2010. What we're doing here is merely following on from that previous action, and we're presenting to you the increase that is the result of two years of the CPI being applied because of the deferment in previous years.
Okay. I don't think I got my question answered. My question was, is what capital improvement projects do we have either coming up or did we have that could justify this rate increase? So, the expenditures versus the revenues?
Let me try to answer that, Sean. Because this is a fee on new development, there's no way to know exactly what these fees would be used for. It depends on what development comes here. If a large housing development were to come in, potentially, these fees would go towards building a new reservoir, building new pipes. But since this is for future development, they wouldn't necessarily be on a CIP plan just yet. It may be because we're projecting that potentially development could occur in that area, but this is really more about future development and making sure that we keep pace with the costs as they escalate, should that development come in. If no development comes in, then nobody ever pays an additional fee, one way or the other.
I think that my concern is, is that we have a plan for this money. We paid back the $20 million to the Water District, correct?
That's correct.
So, that money, I just want to make sure that we just don't have a lot of cash laying around, that we have either a CIP plan in place where we know where that money's going to be allocated for. And I would just hate to see a lot of cash laying around where we're giving it to salaries or, you know, to benefits or anything like that, as I need to know where that money is going. So, when I'm presented with a rate increase, I would feel more comfortable as a councilmember representing the people if I knew that we need this rate increase because we have X amount of projects, because we have compliance and regulations to uphold with the law and the changing laws, and this is where the money is going to go, other than just give us this rate increase because we have this and we've deferred it for three years, which is concerning because we should be keeping up with it. But again, no matter what, I feel more comfortable if I saw a capital improvement plan and where that money's going to be going and needed for.
Let me address a couple of those things. One, these are capital funds. They can't be used on salaries and benefits. These have to be set aside specifically for capital purposes, and those capital purposes would be identified at the time that a developer comes forward in order to pay the fees. The funds that are held for capital purposes already, that $20 million, is actually held for other capital projects that aren't needed just yet. These fees would be in addition to those based on the needs of any new development that comes into town. But it's not a rate increase. It's not a rate increase on the citizens of Victorville, on their water bill. This is simply connection fees that are paid by a new development in order to ensure that they have water availability.
It's not actually, a connection fee is the fee we're going to charge somebody who connects in the future. It's not a fee we're going to go out and charge people today.
That's correct.
And when they connect in the future, there's going to have to be capacity to provide that service. And we don't go out and do projects at $2,000 apiece. It's a, I'm just trying to remember from my time on the Water District, if we ever were able to track specific expenditures to specific connection fees. I'm not sure it ever flowed that way.
Not directly, no. I mean, you could see, over time, you may be able to draw some of those conclusions, that these fees went to these projects, but it's not a direct one-to-one fee. We don't collect, if 10 homes come in, we don't collect those fees and go out and build a small portion of the pipe. We save those dollars until a larger portion of pipe is needed.
And I just remember the problems that Lento had when they went 10, 12 years without raising fees, and when they finally had to do it, it was a brutal hit, and a bunch of really good councilmembers were no longer on the council as a result of that.
And very similarly, with development impact fees in general, there was requests routinely from the Building Industry Association to not implement fees, and so we had some delays. And ultimately, once a fee was implemented, the cost change ended up being sizable in nature. And at that point, the council directed staff to, as best we can, come back on a more regular basis with routine smaller increases. And that's, I think, where this comes from, is from that, those requests to try to maintain the costs over time rather than trying to hold back and then coming forward with a much larger increase.
At this point, first of all, Councilmember Vias, Councilman Kennedy, very good questions. I'd like to open the public hearing. We do have a card from Mr. Carlos Rodriguez, who would like to speak on this item. Public hearing is now open.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Carlos Rodriguez, CEO with the Building Industry Association, Baldi Mesa Chapter. Our association represents the home builders, subcontractors, and other trades that are 1,000 companies strong throughout Southern California. And as some of the discussion was proceeding in regards to previous policy decisions, I hearken back to when I came aboard at the BIA in 2004 and what a different time and place it was in the economy. At that time, one out of every five permits pulled in San Bernardino County was in the City of Victorville. At the height of the housing boom, there were over 3,000 permits in Victorville. And at that time, there were certainly development impact fee increases, and it's because of new home development that we are into this beautiful facility that was constructed. I don't know if the residents are aware of that, but City Hall was constructed through development impact fees, as well as a host of other capital improvements throughout the great city of Victorville. So, we certainly don't have an issue with respect to paying our fair share. I think what has changed dramatically from that time to now is a historical housing depression, and this has been at the center, the City of Victorville has been at the center, where it was once at the peak of development. We have seen just a tremendous crash that you are all aware of, as accompanied by roughly 15% to 20% unemployment in the high desert. We are here tonight to just ask to hold off on any fee increase, really until we see a more healthy economy, a more healthy housing market that can absorb any fee increase. So, when you look at the City of Victorville having 3,000 permits in 2005, and now the last few years barely breaking 200, really what we're looking at is, if we were a patient, as an industry, if you wanted to look at us as a patient, the last few years, we've been in a coma. It's been just awful. And now, we're seeing some signs of, you know, waking up from the coma, so to speak, but the patient is still deathly ill. And we really are here tonight to really say, when you look at the 3/4 inch, the 1-inch, the 1 and 1/2 inch, and the 2-inch meters, to forego those increases that would be directly applicable to single-family and multifamily development and allow us to get back on our feet. We do see signs of improvement, but not at anywhere near where... We do see signs of, of improvement, but not at, at anywhere near where-
Ten seconds, Mr. Rodriguez.
-anywhere near where, in our view, a fee increase would be prudent. So, our request again is to forego the fee increase for the next 24 months and then revisit that and hopefully, and hopefully, a more healthy economy. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards for individuals. If there's anyone else that wants to speak on this item, I don't see anyone approaching. I do not have a card. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Any further comments from the council? I, I have some comments I'd like to make, but I'll wait till last. Yes, go ahead, Ms. McEckern.
And Carlos, I know you went and sat back down, but I might have a question for you, so if you could come back up here. I've, I've never been a fan of fee increases, and I've actually campaigned on, on that very issue, not to ever increase them. But we received a memo today from Steve Bowerman, Assistant Director of the Water District, comparing fees in Victorville, the proposed fees, to, in essence, what City of Asperia, City of Adelanto, Oak Hills, County Service Area 70, and the Ranch Cucamonga Water District that charge. And we are way underneath those particular jurisdictions. I mean, not by a little, by a lot. And so, what I, what I would question you on is, considering the fact that, you know, you have, at least in one council member, no desire to raise any fees, but probably in the other council members to just put this through tonight, is there any in-between that the BIA could come to where we could potentially work out a plan to increase it incrementally over the next two years instead of waiting two years on a deferral? That's a question for you.
To your point in regards to comparisons, I, I think Councilmember Vias, in her remarks inquiring about the, the capital improvement plans, those are different, as different as every city is different. I don't think Victorville would say they're the same as Asperia, or Adelanto, or Apple Valley. Every city's different, and so the fees are going to be different. And to just, so just from that standpoint, unless the capital improvement plans are juxtaposed and you look at them, I really think the whole point about the comparison that was mentioned in the memo are moot. In regards to, it really, again, this is ultimately, for us, jobs, 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 in getting to a place where we can have a better economy. The anchor of an economic recovery is going to be through new home development, and that's any economist, national, local, they'll tell you that. So, for us, we, we're asking is a philosophical decision, one that says, as the city, we're going to hold off on any fee increases at this time because, quite frankly, the economy and the housing depression is still here, and we want to, to do nothing to be an impediment to the recovery. So, our ask would be to, to forego the, the increase, and, and really, that's something that comes from, you know, every home builder that is looking at land, that wants to build here, that intends to build here, that has hundreds of lots here that are now, I have one builder that's, you know, having to, you know, go to Hawaii to, or go to other markets to try to build to stay in business, because so many have gone out of business, quite frankly. So, again, what, what our, our message here tonight's a simple one. Help us be a part of the solution in, in bringing the economy back by holding off on, you know, what's changed in the last two years? Not much. Not much has changed in the last few years. So, in holding off on those fee increases the last few years, why not continue it, continue to hold fast on, on any increase until we're in a better economy? And then we can be at the table and talk about implementing a fee increase at that time when it's more prudent, in our view.
One last follow-up question. So, in two years, when they were, it, let's assume we defer this, two years they bring it back to us, would you not be back here advocating that we not increase it at that point?
I can tell you one thing, I don't have a crystal ball that the economy will be better. I sure hope to God it will be, but I, I'll tell you, we'll be in a lot better position, hopefully, in, in 24 months than we are today, to be talking about what's a prudent implementation of an increase. But right now, there's, in, in our view, the economy is just so abysmal that it really doesn't justify any increase at this time.
Thank you, Carlos. That's, you answered my questions.
Thank you.
Well, just, just to follow on that question, our fees are substantially lower than surrounding communities, Adelanto, Asperia. Assuming these fees has, have some stimulating effect on building, are we building more homes in Victorville today than they are in Asperia and Adelanto? Anybody know the answer to that?
Asperia, Councilmember Kennedy, over the last few years had zero, zero permits and maybe 50 or so permits. I mean, it's just been across, this is not unique to Victorville, this, this housing depression, and, and-
That's, that's not exactly my question. My question is, are, are the fact that our fees are lower having a significant, any measurable effect on the building going on in Victorville compared to Asperia, Adelanto, and so on?
I don't know that we could assign it necessarily to the fees. No one's building a lot of homes, but we certainly, as Carlos has mentioned, we certainly are building more than our neighbors are. We're talking literally a couple of hundred versus, you know, single digits or zero, in the case of Asperia, for a couple of years. Just to bring one, a little bit more information, Carlos's request was to forego the fee increase for the three-quarter inch through the two-inch. And there is, if you look at, in your agenda, it would give you the actual cost for those. The three-quarter inch right now is 49.08 for the total fees. It would go to 51.42, an increase of $234. The one inch is 73.23, go to 76.72, increase of $349. One and a half inch is 15.913, going to 16.671, an increase of $758. And then the two-inch, the largest that Mr. Rodriguez mentioned, is $25,728 now, going to $26,954, just over a $1,200 increase. I don't mean to, to belittle the difference in increase because it is an increase, but we're talking a hundred or a couple hundred dollars in each one of those increases, all the way up to a change of just over $1,000 for a $25,000, $26,000 charge currently. So, I just want the council to be aware of the, the actual numbers that we're looking at under Mr. Rodriguez's request.
If I can just, for a moment, comment to that point, these fees are on top of roads, schools, parks, and other infrastructure, in some, in some total upwards of $30,000 across the board. I know you don't have the, the jurisdiction in respect to school fees, but every, every school that's built, it's built through development impact fees. So, when you look at the cumulative total, and we, we don't take any offense to the comments about the amounts at all, it's just every dollar counts. Every dollar counts, and anyone that signed in front of a check, that's owned a business, that's, you know, we are, we are imploring our subs, hold steady, don't increase costs. We're trying to come back here. That's our message to our trade partners. And so, in a similar vein, we're reaching out to you and saying, hold fast, whether it's 300 or up to 1,200, hold steady on the fee increases at this time. And it is a, a point of clarification, there are fees that are proposed tonight that we're, we're not commenting on. So, if it is the desire of the council to proceed on the other meter sizes, those aren't the ones we're commenting on. So, it's not an all-or-nothing proposition tonight, from our, our perspective.
You're concerned the three-quarter inch, one inch, and one and a half inch, is that it?
And two.
And two.
Correct. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Carlos. Mr. Rodriguez, thank you very much. Any further comments? If, one of the things that I think I need to restate, on the three-quarter meter, if I read this correct, the total fees would go to 5100. Asperia is currently 61, Adelanto 82, Oak Hills 84, Cucamonga, for example, 10,700. On the one-inch meter, would go to 7,600. City of Asperia is 10,312. City of Adelanto 13,803. Oak Hills 14,172. I'm going to continue this on one and a half meters. Victorville would go to 16,000. City of Asperia is 20,000. City of Adelanto 27,000. Oak Hills 28,000. Ranch Cucamonga 35,000. Haven't noticed a shortage of building in Ranch Cucamonga. The two-inch meter, Victorville would go to 26,000. City of Asperia 32,000. City of Adelanto 44,000. Oak Hills 45,000. Ranch Cucamonga 57,000. These, these sewer connect fees are based upon what the staff, the engineer, Water District views as infrastructure that's needed. It's based upon an engineering study for future infrastructure cost, and once they make the determination as best as they can on future infrastructure cost, that we make the connection fees to ensure that there is adequate water for the new development. To put this off, there's no reason to put it off. It is none of the local users, it's not the water users, it's, it's only for the future development. Future development should certainly pay its way. It would be, it would be a shame if we didn't put this off and for some reason had to borrow from the funds, because the first developer that comes in, and we haven't collected the fees, and engineering has to make infrastructure improvements, and we have, we do not have the money for it, we're going to be in an odd position that we haven't collected it. And I can tell you that if you suddenly realize that you haven't collected the fees, you need to increase it, you're not going to be sitting here, holding everything up until you go through the process, have the public hearing, and then charge what is an appropriate fee. Our fees are substantially lower than any competitor, they're going to remain lower, but the cost of infrastructure, pipe supplies, and labor is identical. So, we are in good shape. We have to make sure that if we do have growth and we want the growth, if it's good growth that we don't get behind the eight ball to wait three or four years and then have a gigantic increase, not only would get, I would thank the Building Industry Association, but every developer who has something filed with the city screaming, "This is really unfair to have this gigantic increase," suddenly that they didn't count on because they have studied the situation, they have gone to their lender, they have made all the appropriate decisions, they have made all the appropriate borrowing, and suddenly they're faced with an increase that they didn't count on, and a request to the council to hold that fee off for another year. Now's the time to do it, now's the time to put the fee in place. I'm not so sure it should have been delayed this long, but I think it's appropriate to adopt the fee, and I recommend this council do so.
I just have one last comment. Again, I, I completely agree with keeping up with the adjustments. It's, it's very, very important. I just feel that the information that I was provided, I just want to make sure that, you know, especially with the 20 million that we just paid back, that there's just, we're just not collecting just to collect, that there's really, really a need in that it's going to be used, and I don't see that, or I can't seem to get, get that information right now. So, if, if the council wants to table this until we can get that or I can see that, I could support this, but I just feel like I just need a little more information.
The only, the only problem with that, Ms. Vias, is that it, no matter what they get, it's going to be estimating, it's going to be looking at a crystal ball in the future, guessing at what costs they're going to be. Here's what concerns me, if, if we don't build these rising costs into the connection fees for future users, they're going to get pushed backwards to existing users. I, I don't see any other way to pay for them. So, my feeling is, future development, future users ought to pay for future capacity. The rest of us who are here now should not have to cover that cost, even the small incremental cost. So, I'm, sadly, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
I believe we've closed the public hearing, Madam Clerk.
That's correct.
We've closed the discussion. If there's no further questions, the chair is open for a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, seconded by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern and Councilmember Vias voting no.
That is approved. Thank you very much for your participation. Agenda item number 11 for the Victorville Water District, written communications, lease agreement. Comments from Director Pollock Works and Water.
It's time for a question. Mr. Mayor?
Questions?
The La Plonto, La Ponto Reservoir. Help me out, Sean. What's, what is the flow? MWA takes water from the aqueduct and they recharge at Rock Springs.
Right.
And then their wells draw water from the aquifer, and it then goes to the La Ponto Reservoir, or where is that in the whole system?
The, the wells are in the river basin. They'll pump water basically westerly through Asperia and into Victorville, and there are turnouts on that pipeline along the way, so they can actually serve water to the City of Asperia, two points into the City of Victorville, one point into the City of Adelanto, and then on the other side of the river, there are facilities available to pump across into the various Apple Valley water companies.
And where is this reservoir that's-
La Ponto is located adjacent to the California Aqueduct in the very, very southern portion, southwest portion of Victorville. It's a 5 million gallon reservoir.
Will we take from the aqueduct into that reservoir?
Yes, indirectly, yes, that's right.
And then recharge at Rock Springs, or a different flow?
No, let's not get confused. The, the reservoir is at the end of the line that Mojave Water Agency pumps. So, it comes many miles west from the river into the La Ponto. From there, it can be distributed either to Victorville or the City of Adelanto.
Who currently owns the reservoir?
The, the district owns the reservoir.
Who paid for the reservoir?
The district, the Water District.
This is a non-monetary agreement, so is there, there's some kind of reciprocal agreement?
What, what the lease document does is allows the Mojave Water Agency to use the, the storage and the delivery line, the 30-inch water line, which is also the district's, for distributing to Victorville and to the City of Adelanto. And for that, we still retain the storage as if that tank was in our system.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLei. Any further questions from the council? The chair is open for a motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 12, under written communications, Victorville Water District, water supply connection agreement. Same project, Mr. McLei?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this would be the agreement for Mojave Water Agency to provide the water to the district's system. We've enumerated the benefits being a slightly cheaper cost. Instead of the district having to pump water to 300 feet from wells, it is pumped by Mojave Water Agency. The water is lower in arsenic content than our well water, and so there are further benefits then derived from the blending benefits of introducing that into our system and reducing and maybe even negating arsenic treatment.
My understanding is that the, the pumping from the RQ project by Mojave Water Agency will provide water probably cheaper and probably without the arsenic that's contained in the current, but in case of earthquake or other calamities, we still have to maintain our current system and the arsenic treatment facilities.
Absolutely. There, there is pending requirements, we believe, coming down the pike, dealing with chromium six. We don't know the impacts of that yet, but if there are similar requirements from EPA that we endured with the arsenic level, then we may have to, there may be further- further benefits from the aqueduct water.
Any further questions?
Are we solving most of the arsenic problem with wellhead treatment, or with blending? Or is it some of both?
It's a combination. It really is a combination. It depends on the arsenic levels from particular wells, but our arsenic treatment facilities then will treat that water before delivery to the customer.
Other questions? The chair is open for a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 13 was handled with agenda item number 8, and therefore we go to the consensus calendar, agenda item number 14. Questions? A request to pull any items from, if not, the chair is open for a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias.
Councilman McEckern has excused himself for a short period of time.
Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern absent.
Written communications, agenda, I'm sorry, oh, written communication, agenda item number 15. Request to approve amendment number 1 to the General Service Provider Agreement with Trimark Associates, Inc., for meter reading and data management services to add and exercise a final option period for meter reading and data management services in the amount of $33,000 for fiscal year 1314.
I had a fiscal question on here. I didn't really understand when it said the fiscal impact is for fiscal year 1314, $33,000. Then it says budget amount, not apply, total budget, budgeted in account, not apply, and then remaining balance, not apply. And then it says budgeted account, the Foxborough, and then the account number in SCLA. I didn't really understand that. So you're taking the $33,000 out of the Foxborough account?
No, these are for meters both at Foxborough and SCLA. They provide meter reading services for us, for our electric customers. The reason why this is on the agenda is because of our growth in our customer base, the number of meters we now, this contract now exceeds $25,000, which is the spending authority for staff. So this is to finish out this year, as well as authorize the final year in the option. Next year, we would be doing an RFP for this. This did go through a bidding procedure for a smaller dollar amount, so it didn't go through the full public RFP, went through a different type of a public
Okay, I guess I'm still not getting it. So it's going to cost us $33,000 in 1314?
That's correct.
Correct. But it was not budgeted?
1314 isn't budgeted yet.
Okay.
It will be.
It will be.
It will be. It will be included in the budget, but this gives it-
So we're just ahead of the game?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
For the agreement purposes. Note that Mr. McEckern has joined our meeting.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 16. Mr. Attorney, would you like to present this?
Certainly, thank you, Mayor Cox. This is a settlement agreement that reflects the prior direction of the council in connection with the settling, one of the acquisition of one of the parcels related to the Nisqually interchange. The property owner previously sought to be compensated in the amount of 3.6, almost $3.7 million, based on their valuations of the property. We were able to settle the transaction for 1.25, of which the property owner has previously already received a deposit in the amount of about $340,000. So we have a balance due of 910, I believe. A significant portion of these are going to be paid for out of state, and federal reimbursements in connection with the proceeding of the acquisition. And after assuming you are to approve this, it leaves us with only, I think, two additional properties to settle. So this is a settlement agreement with the Rokenians and the other property owners, based on prior direction from the
Any further comments from the city manager?
Not this time.
If there's no further questions, the chair is open for a motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 17 has been handled in conjunction with item number 6. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Item 18. This is submitted by the city attorney, and I will let you make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. Again, this is a proposed approval of two different fee agreements pertaining to the Walmart project located on Highway 395, well, right next to Highway 395 on Palmdale Road. The developer is putting in stormwater drainage facilities in excess of what would be required from their project, and therefore we are requesting that they seek a fee credit agreement with respect to DIF fees. In addition, they are putting in improvements on Cantina Road that are in excess of what would be required from their project, so there is a fee agreement related to that Cantina Road improvement as well.
No further questions?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is agenda item number 19, under written communication on the city council agenda. There has been some discussion, some rumors. I ran into this at the league meeting, and I'm still a little bit confused. I understand that some of our, possibly the county supervisors, our congressman has been involved, because they want to support the local transit, certainly want to support National Training Center at Fort Irwin. I do too, but I asked one question, is this in our service area? It was not. And so I'm wondering about, this is a question for Mr. Robertson, our city manager, if we react to a request to spend our LTF money on transit outside our service area without reimbursements, what happens when the next area, Arrowhead, La Cern Valley, you name it, makes a request that we have individuals from the area driving to, fill in the blank, Lancaster, Palmdale, and therefore we have some responsibility to provide transit? I'm not sure that I can agree that we have to respond outside our service area. On the other hand, if our good supervisor, assemblyman, senator, or congressman are going to get us federal fines, then we need to cooperate in every way. I'd like your comments, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to provide a little bit more background on this as well, before I answer that specific question, this was first before the council, I believe, in December. Councilmember Vias brought it up as a concern that she had, based on, she sits on the Victor Valley Transit Authority Board. At that time, it had been raised, the issue had been raised, and we're possibly going to be asked to contribute as much as $1.3 million towards funding these buses. There was a communication mix-up with that. Ultimately, it has been resolved, and they found other funding, for one thing, as well as Sandbag has come up with the monies that they, at that time at least, were saying they weren't going to pay. So ultimately, the maximum cost to each of the cities is $55,000. And in fact, I've heard from the Public Works Manager-Director in Apple Valley that it may actually end up being $0 from the LTF that we currently can spend on roads. Getting back to your question, I asked that very specific question of the Executive Director of Sandbag, as to just more of a philosophical question, not that anybody is opposed to supporting the National Training Center, or the federal government, and the troops out there, but what should we tell the tens of thousands of other travelers that leave our city to go southerly, in a southerly direction, about why they don't have buses? And the answer essentially at that time was that the state law allows the director, Executive Director of Sandbag, or Sandbag as a board, to withhold the LTF funds if they determine that we have an unmet need. I will tell you that we have a difference of opinion on whether or not it is an unmet need, because I agree with you, Mr. Cox, I don't believe this is in our service territory. We do have a very good relationship with the supervisor, we do enjoy a very good relationship with the congressman, and for those reasons, I would recommend that we support the National Training Center buses. And that's why I've written a staff report in the way that I have.
Yeah, I had the same concerns that Mayor Cox had, and that's why I brought this up, and I wanted to see if the council would support it. But since then, the general manager, Kevin Kane, came up, found the buses, found the funding. All the cities are going to, I was concerned that Victorville was going to get stuck holding the bag of money and paying for this. We do have 100, and I think it was 57, people from Victorville working at the National Training Center, and that was just surveyed in one day, so there could even be more than that, could have been their day off when they surveyed. And that money is supposed to be replenished in our funds, so I support it now, now that, and we are also having talks with Barstow, is going to get involved in our JPA and start putting up money as well. So we did do some pushback on our board at VBTA, and it got some attention. And now they are getting Barstow involved, as well as they found the buses, and it was 1.6 million, if I'm correct. And they found the buses, they found the funding, and they're going to give us the money back. So I think that, you know, it's a good thing. It's a very good thing.
Councilmember Vias, thank you for representing the city on that board. We were concerned when this first came to us. A lot of information has occurred since then, because of that pushback, and because of your concern, and we appreciate it. Any further questions on this matter? Other questions? We have a motion?
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the city council agenda under written communications, the subject matter is options to rename the La Mesa-Nisqually interchange. And I'm going to remind everyone what occurred in the past. At the end of a meeting that we had, Councilman Kennedy requested a future agenda item on the discussion of the request. On February 5, 2013, a group of high-desert residents requested the city council consider renaming La Mesa-Nisqually interchange to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. interchange. There was also discussion about renaming one or more streets in the area, or naming a new street after Dr. King. Staff was directed to meet with the group to refine their request, or a single request for future consideration by the council, and therefore, I'm going to ask the city manager to speak on that in just one second. I just want to read one thing that I've underlined. This is placed on the agenda for additional input from the public. So the city council can make an informed decision that reflects the will of their constituency. A final decision may be made. The purpose of this item is to allow additional input, and I, as the chair, do not expect a decision to be made. I'm not even sure we could even make a decision. But I want to make, I don't know if the public has seen the ideas forwarded to the staff, from the public, from the committee, and these are ideas forwarded and concerns raised. I just want to say that I have a lot of cards, and I know that a lot of individuals are going to speak, but I want to make a plea. Do not let this item divide this community. And if you don't think that's happening, you ought to sit at my house and listen to my phone. This kind of gotten out of hand. The city has a well-known reputation for diversity. Extremely proud of the city, we want to keep it that way, and we're taking input, we want input from everyone. I'm sure that most of you are aware, that now that this item has been raised, each and every one of these council members sitting here are besieged with requests, do it, don't do it, put it on the ballot, vote for it, do a public poll, let individuals raise the money if they want to vote for it, and everything you can possibly think of. I tried to keep track of where the public opinion was, and I can tell you that it's extremely divided, and that in itself is extremely unfortunate. That is the last thing I want to see. That's the last thing this council wants to see. We are, in effect, going to take input and make a reasoned decision sometime in the future, based upon what we believe is best for this community. I don't think anybody is going to change our mind from doing that. In the meantime, we would like input. We have a large number of cards. If we allocate each member three minutes, I don't know, let's see, we'll be an hour and something, maybe an hour and a half, listening to members. Invariably, in something like this, most members have a tendency to repeat or say the same thing. If you agree, please just state that you agree with the last speaker or the speaker before last, and it's not necessary to repeat in three minutes. And I know it's important to you, it's important, every individual has filled this out, and we want to hear what you have to say. But we do want you to understand that there was another group of people that was going to be here and elected not to, because they didn't want to, given appearance of dividing this community. We don't want that to happen. We could have had a couple of hundred people here, easily. I'm personally discouraging that, because this has to be a reasoned decision, based upon all the information that we can receive. So at this point in time, I'm going to ask the council members to withhold their comments until after we try to hear from you. If you, I want to call the names, as I have received them, as they were given to me, and we will do the best we can, be patient, because we do want to hear what you have to say. The first speaker, Mr. Felix Diaz. I didn't see Felix. Oh, he's in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Being that I'm a lifetime member of this community, born in Hisperia 79 years ago, I believe that this issue is really a no-brainer, because a lot of people do not understand or realize that Martin Luther King did not do this only for peoples of color. He did it for everybody, everybody. Every person in America is touched by his actions, not just African-Americans, or not just peoples of color. Women, women are getting benefit from that. Everybody, students, you name it. And I just want to pass this by you very briefly. Growing up here in Victorville, and going through this racist nonsense for 20 years, anyway, racism, and discrimination, and all this junk, I thought we had it bad. I really thought we had it bad here in Victorville and in California, until 1957, when I went in service, and my first wife and I decided to go the southern route, through Texas, and Louisiana, Mississippi, Alabama, Georgia. And I have never in my life seen such inhumanity, such inhumanity, man's inhumanity to man, as I saw, as we saw. We cried, my wife and I cried. We could not believe that people, human beings, were treated the way that they were. I, being a person of color, I didn't know whether to get out of my car to go to the bathroom. My wife, who was Anglo- My wife, who was Anglo, she could get down and go to the bathroom that was listed white only. I did not know. I did not know whether to get down and go to the colored section or to stay in the car. In most instances, I stayed in the car. I was afraid to get lynched. The attendant at that time would come up to the door and look at me and notice that I was in the military by seeing my uniform there and served me. But again, I stayed in the car. I would not get out because I did not know basically where I stood. And to see the scenes are still very vivid in my mind from 1957 from what I saw.
10 seconds, please.
And thank you very much. I pray and I thank God every single day for Martin Luther King. And like I say, this is not just for peoples of color. This is for all Americans and basically for most of the world. Thank you very much for your time.
I believe this is Regina Bell Weatherspoon, but its initials, is that correct? Regina B. something U. R. W.? Is that correct? Okay. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on this issue. I am not a resident of Victorville. However, I have been a high desert resident for 21 years. So therefore, I have seen quite a bit of progress made and a lot of transition. I also think it's important on this particular issue that you understand, I myself, through my company and through my community service and affiliations, have recognized over 238 local individuals in this high desert area. This is not a matter, and we don't want it to be reduced to an issue or a matter of race. It is not. What we see is that bridge stands as a unifier. It stands as a connector of who we are as people here in the high desert, this evolution of population and our growth. And I really appeal to all of you this evening to be courageous, to stand firm in what was initially represented, that a resolution be brought forth, and that we move forward to a better day where we can celebrate together the connectedness of people living in a community and honoring someone like Dr. King who stood for equality and justice for all. So I thank you for your time. And again, I appeal to you to be courageous in the face of the adversity that you all may be entertaining at this time. But know that you are... I turned in this evening myself 58 letters from individuals in this community that are standing firm in supporting the overpass being named after Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray Gray?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilman. My name's Willie Ray Gray, AKA Ray Gray. I live at 15395 Tibanga Road, Victorville, California. I've lived in Victorville, California since 1977, 35-plus years. I've seen a lot of changes here in those 35-plus years. But I'm here tonight to urge you to support the initiative or proposal for the bridge, for the Nisqually Bridge. I realize we live in an ultra-conservative neighborhood, community area. However, it's beyond me to think that you have opposition to naming a bridge after Dr. Martin Luther King. After all, he, like just prior, said prior to me, he's done more for this country than anybody else in our modern-day history for equality and justice for all people, not just one people. I also realize that we have people in our community and in our society that either want to forget or ignore our nation's history. I was in Montgomery, Alabama in 1956. I remember Little Rock, Arkansas in 1957 and 58. I won't forget. Martin Luther King said one time, "A man can't keep his foot in your back unless you lay down." So sometime, we have to stand up for what we believe in. I'm standing before you tonight. I have earned the privilege to stand and speak to you. I have the physical and mental scars as my down payment. So whatever you decide, I say to you, let your conscience be your guide. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Next, Mr. Craig Garcia.
It's the first time I've ever addressed the council, but a little nervous. I agree with what you said, that this shouldn't divide the community. I see it in the newspaper and I hear it in the neighborhood. Four gentlemen, John Kennedy, Robert Kennedy, Martin Luther King, and Cesar Chavez. When I was about five, my mother took me to LA, to Olvera Street, to see a man. I ended up shaking his hand, and he became President of the United States. About five years later, I watched TV and I watched him die. Same thing with Martin Luther King. Those things were vivid in my mind. But I also know what they did for the country. Robert Kennedy. And the last we seen go was Cesar Chavez in 93. By that time, I was in my 30s. But these men were my heroes. They helped build character to a lot of young individuals like myself and across the country. Young people were admired, in admiration of these people. They helped our lives, you know, kind of build on what we wanted for the future. But none of these gentlemen had anything to do with the Victor Valley. My history, and I've only been in Victorville for 10 years, the history studies that I've done. Before Jacob Victor, there was a gentleman by the name of Aaron Lane. He established the pass between Barstow and established a lane cross, what they called the lane crossing to San Bernardino. And correct me if I'm wrong, but there's nothing in the Mojave Valley or the Victor Valley recognizing this gentleman for starting the community flow coming through this area. With all due respect to Dr. King, I would like the council to take into consideration naming the pass or this new crossing for us, either Lane's Crossing or Aaron's Lane Overpass. Just take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Yvonne Mashick? Can't get that right, can I?
Good evening, council again. In Victorville, we don't have any facilities named after the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. Why wouldn't you approve the overpass? It's just something that should be done for the people of Victorville. I'd like you to really take it under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Reyes?
I've lived here 28 years in Victorville. And I live in between Bear Valley and La Mesa. And I don't think that this is a civil rights issue. It's an overpass. And we have a problem with Bear Valley as it is. People come in here, trying to get off, trying to get on. I think as far as the commuters go, it needs to be commuter-friendly. So if it's Nisqually and La Mesa, then it should be Nisqually and La Mesa. And, you know, like I said, I'm not debating civil rights here or talking about Dr. King or anything else. I just, I live here and I have to get on Bear Valley and I have to go around La Mesa as it is now. And when people come through here or get off here, they'll know where they're getting off or they have to get off. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Charlie Glasper?
Again, I'm here again. This is my third trip. And I'm going to still echo what I said the first two times. Let's diversify this. Let's keep it to a point to where we can all recognize the fact that it, people, we're talking about. Let's don't make this a black-white issue. Let's keep it simple. Let's keep it to the point to where we can all benefit as a people. And I think Dr. King, if he was alive, he would not be looking at this as a racial thing, but he would look at it as a thing of harmony and unity. So I say, let's keep it that way. Let's vote your conscience. Let's act on this in a reasonable and a sensible way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Glasper. Next speaker, Dorothy Miller. That'll be followed by Dr. David Denson. And the reason I called the name is we have a little delay here. I know we're getting tired, but I'll do that so that the next speaker can get ready. Thank you, Dorothy. You're up.
Okay, mayor and council members. I only have one little thing to say. I feel that we really should take this to a vote of all the people in the city. And I think that would be the best thing in the world to do. Then everybody understands where we're coming from. And there's several reasons we wouldn't want to do what somebody wants. Naming the street over here, one name, the name over here of the street, another name. And then you go across the bridge and that's another name. Who's going to know where they're at, especially if they're not from the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Dr. Denson. Next speaker would be Brittany McDermott. You get prepared, please. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I just, 19 years ago when I came to this city, it was unique in its form because it was not something I was accustomed to. At that time, Mayor Busby was the mayor. The spiritual leader of the high desert was Bill Hanson. And so many other patriarchs have already seen the way. I believe the fact that naming it after Dr. King symbolizes the diversity of our city. It shows the fact that there is not just those that helped build the city. We have Dale Evans Parkway. We have Roy Rogers. We have all names of people that are local. But this is a defining moment that we don't have to be small when we can be big. I make this statement all the time, that you can't be big when small got you. This is a chance to do something big, something nationally. And all the thousand people that travel through this city, they can see the diversity was really here. And it won't be hidden in the closet, but it'll be an open idea that this is a place with equality for all people. So I would urge you, and I support, along with my church, and I gave you a letter with my heart's feeling about that, that this would be a place that we can make this stand and show the diversity of our city. And others would desire to come and live here, not just buy gas and eat and leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Denson. Brittany McDermott. And after Ms. McDermott would be Kayla Booker. All right, that'll be the next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Cox and City Council members. I'm a little bit out of order. I'm Cheryl Thomas Perkins. But the young lady, the name that you just called, there are four cards that you have for these young ladies. And they made their comments as part of like one presentation. So I'd like, if possible, for Kayla, Brittany, let's see, the four of them. I think you have cards for all of them.
If you'll give me the names, I'll be...
Kayla, Brittany, Sarah, and Jackie. They have, and it'll be less than three minutes each. It's one presentation.
I have the cards for, is it Brittany or Brittany and Kayla? I have that.
Sarah and Jackie.
Cora Booker? Is that one of them?
Cora won't be speaking. You can take that. She's part of the group, but she won't be speaking.
All right. Go ahead.
Good evening, Victorville City Council members and guests. My name's Kayla Kinnis Booker. I'm 18 years old and I'm in the 12th grade. I attend Sultana High School. And I would like Victorville City Council to name Nisqually Overpass for civil rights leader, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., because he spent his life helping others. Dr. King was a freedom fighter who cared a lot about everyone. Also, he came from a well-to family and he also considered other people who are less fortunate than he was. He worked hard to make sure that everyone had a right and an equal life. Thank you for considering the proposal of the name of the new overpass after Dr. King.
Thank you.
Good evening, Victorville City Council members and guests. My name is Brittany McDermott. I'm in the eighth grade. I attend Options for Youth School. I would like the Victorville City Council to name the Nisqually Overpass for civil rights leader, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., because Dr. King is a great symbol of peace, unity, kindness, tolerance, inclusiveness. It would be great to have such a landmark in Victorville that all high desert residents and other who travel through our streets could see. It would be a symbol of unity and pride. Thank you for considering the proposal to name the new overpass after Dr. King.
Thank you.
Good evening, Victorville City Council members...
I'm sorry. What's your name?
Sarah Townsend. My name... Good evening, Victorville City Council members and guests. My name is Sarah Townsend. I am in the 10th grade and I attend Encore Junior/Senior High School. I would like the Victorville City Council to name the Nisqually Overpass for civil rights leader, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., because of all the good things he did to help others during his short life. Dr. King believed in education and he was a good student. All of us in this room, by our presence, are enjoying rights that Dr. King directly contributed to, such as the right to assemble together without prejudice. Thank you for considering the proposal to name the new overpass after Dr. King.
Thank you.
Good evening, Victorville City Council members and guests. My name is Jacqueline Schumacher. I'm in the 12th grade. I attend Sultana High School. City Council members and guests, naming the overpass after Dr. King will show that we are a progressive city that embraces change, that we respect all people regardless of their differences, and encourages peace, just as Dr. King did. Thank you for considering the proposal to name the new overpass after Dr. King.
I may be out of order. I hope not. Next speaker is Robert Del Toro. And followed by Diana Del Toro. Are you going to...
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Robert Del Toro and I'm a resident of the Victor Valley. I would urge your support in naming the overchain for Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. I believe that he should be honored for his civil, for his dedication to civil rights and bringing about meaningful social change to the country and its citizens. He brought people together. And try to do it in a peaceful way so that we all can be proud of this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Toro.
I'm Diana Davidson Del Toro and live in Hesperia.
I'm Diana Davidson Del Toro and live in Asbury, but I also use the interchanges in Victorville. And I just wanted to say that this, to me, this is not about the whim of one segment of our community because Martin Luther King Jr., he's a martyred hero for all of us. And monuments and streets that are named after him symbolize to all of us that they're reminders that he was for peace and justice and love for all people. And I would like to see this a unifying act of the council and not see it as something that's dividing us. I would like the rest of the country that sees our roads to think that we're diverse and unified. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Samuel Quick. I stand before you not as an enemy and not as anybody who is to tell you that this is an act of civil rights. I don't find that this bridge fiasco, as it has become, is something that we should view as something that has to do with civil rights. In an attempt to reconcile and to create a symbol of diversity and the abolishment of racism in what should be the normal society, we have created a monster. In this attempt to unify and to show a symbol of peace in between races, we have somehow created a problem and a split down between the city. Regardless of the choice that's made, you will have people who do oppose you and who don't. But my proposal to you is not that of race, is not that of civil rights, has nothing to do with those. I approach you as somebody of mixed race and color. I tell you this, that as you have all spoken earlier today and over the last few meetings, and a large concern of mostly that of Councilmember bias, is that we're looking to save money. We don't want to make changes to fees and we don't want to raise things that cause the city to have to spend money. We don't want to make the citizens or the members of the city have to spend money. We don't have things like that. And I look at a project like this and the bridge, and in history it has showed that it has cost over hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars to go across to create new things such as renaming bridges or creating new processes and creating structures or making new roads or renaming things. It is going to create a financial just pool for us to have tried to move on with something like this. The cost of it is unnecessary and the changes that can be made are not, that should be something that should tear this city apart. I've been here for twenty years. My name, of course, is Samuel Quick. I've been here my entire life. I speak to you not only as the voice of myself, but as a very young generation of people who are new to this city, who haven't been here for over fifty to sixty years, maybe some of us who haven't stood up against such oppression and hateful things that have happened in the past, but as a symbol of the times now and to accept that things are different now, we need to accept that something like this can pass without there being any judgment. I move and I propose to all of you to reconcile and resolute to leaving the name of the bridge, Nisqually or La Mesa. As a secondary argument, I just believe that, as someone prior to me has stated, it does make it incredibly simple for people to be able to move back and forth across the city. The bridge itself cuts ten to twenty minutes off of the travel from anybody on the eastern side of town to try to get to that side. And in doing so, I can tell people that I have family who are out of town from here just going to Nisqually. Thank you.
Go ahead. Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt, if that ten seconds bothers you, I'll give you the additional time, but we have to keep this because we have a lot of speakers. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Carlos Perano.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Carlos Perano and I'm actually the citizen that initially contacted the city and asked if you guys could open public discussion on this matter. You know, out of a city of a hundred thousand plus, it's understandable that there's going to be differences of opinion and that's what this whole public discussion is about, you know, hearing the different sides. So what I want to do for you guys is share my perspective, why I thought it was a good idea and why I even brought it up in the first place. And of course, you have the role that Dr. King played in the civil rights movement, as many here have already talked about, but there's more than that. Anyone that knows me knows that my main concern and focus is on the youth. You know, it's on the crime, it's on what's going on, the culture of today, the gangs. You know, we see the violence and the anger that exists. And then you contrast that to what Dr. Martin Luther King stood for. You look at the context of what was going on at that time, you know, what he was seeing, the brutality, the injustice that was going on. The natural response to that is what? It's anger, it's vengeance. But that's not what he preached. He preached the opposite. He mandated that the movement be peaceful. And that's something that's big, it's huge, you know? Being what he had seen, to go and push for peace. On top of that, forgiveness, you know? His message was one of trying to bring people together. And in order to do that, you have to be able to forgive. And to ask someone to forgive what was going on, the atrocities that were going on, forgive somebody that did what is conceivably the worst thing possible to you is huge. It's huge. And those are values that are important. Those are ideals that are important. And you know, one of the things that people say, they're criticizing this idea, well, what do we need to commemorate him here for? He's already been commemorated in a lot of places. Well, there's a reason for it. It's because of what he did, what he stood for, and the significance of it. So, you know, when you think about what's going on today, the values of today, and you think about the values and ideals that he stood for, yeah, they're definitely relevant. They're relevant to our communities, they're relevant to our youths, and that's why I thought it was a great idea. You know, you got the civil rights part, but you got what he symbolized. And ultimately, it's about people coming together and what's better than that? And that's why I thought this was a great idea. And that's why I'm hopeful that the City Council will pass the resolution and give the citizens of Victorville an opportunity to recognize and honor this great man and what he stood for, and which is forgiveness, peace, nonviolence. And these are values that our kids, that our communities, that all of us in the High Desert can admire and strive for. Thank you.
Thank you. RJ Thomas. And following Mr.
Good evening, Mayor Cox, City Council members. My name's RJ Thomas and I'm a longtime resident of High Desert since 1979, I believe about thirty-four years. And I've seen a lot of changes here. There's been a lot of things happening in Victorville since I've been here, and I look forward to even seeing more changes. And this overpass is one of those items that I would, I do support changing. And I would like to say to Ms. Regina Bell, I believe, and Ms. Delores Williams, I received their letter and I looked at it and I said, hey, I'm gonna just take this with me, but I had to add a little something to it. And it says, Dear Honorable Mayor Cox, please accept a letter of support in the name of the Nisqually-La Mesa Overpass to be honored on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. As a citizen of the High Desert who will use this long-awaited overpass, I believe it will stand as an impressive symbol of unity and appropriate acknowledgement of progress. I strongly urge the City of Victorville to lead the way in the High Desert by outwardly embracing our diversity with an honoring of a man whose life, work, and service to the people and the communities throughout our nation was to provide every man, woman, boy, and girl the fundamental access to live and coexist in a society rooted in the American dream of equality, justice, and liberty for all. And your time and consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated. Now, I had a couple of quotes I would like to make. In the end, I would like to leave this with you, in the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. And my second one is, there comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but must take it because conscience tells him it's right. And that's a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you respectfully, RJ Thomas.
Well, thank you. Brenda Travis. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. I'm not a member of the Victorville community, but I am a member and a citizen of the High Desert. And over the years, I've been here for twelve years, and in the twelve years, I've witnessed the diversity of the communities here. And I hope, Mr. Mayor, there was a statement that you made earlier about, you know, our minds are made up and you're not going to change. I hope that's not the truth, especially if your mind is made up in the negative. Because the winds of change has blown through the High Desert. And it's time for us to take a position and take a stand, as the speaker previous to me stated, that do what's right and not what's convenient. Let our conscience, and we hope that you all have a conscience, be our guides and do the right thing. A gentleman spoke earlier. I knew Dr. King personally. I was sixteen years old. And as a matter of fact, some of you may have read about forty-five years later, in McComb, Mississippi, there was a reconciliation of the atrocities that were upon young people and black people in the communities. I am that sixteen-year-old girl that was exiled from the state of Mississippi at the age of sixteen years old. And Dr. King came to my rescue. He went into the jails and he paid a fine for me that they totally ignored. And no, this isn't just about civil rights. This is about human rights. This is about each and every one of us. So I'm asking you, please, to step up to the plate and do the right thing.
I don't, I do not want to engage in any kind of a debate because I respect every individual's input. If there was a understanding that somehow we've made up our mind, I'm very sorry about that, none of us have made up our mind. The whole purpose, I said, was that there had been individuals asking us to take a stand tonight. And the reason this was put on the agenda was, quote, "for additional input from the public so the City Council can make an informed decision that reflects the will of the constituency." While a final decision may be made at this time, the purpose of this item is to allow additional input and direction. And we're trying to get all the input we possibly can. I know there's a large number that would like to see us, like to see the council make a decision. As I indicated very earlier, we're besieged with a large number of people asking and fill in the blank, anything you can think of. And I have not received any request against Dr. Martin Luther King. I've simply received requests that there are other individuals that's contributed to the city in some way or from the historical and merely asking us to consider all those individuals. We have other groups that are asking us to consider other individuals. And one of the things that we want to do is to make a well-informed decision. But one of the things that we're concerned about, should the City Council adopt a resolution? That goes to the legislature. One of the rules is the proposed designation must reflect a community consensus and be without local opposition. You've heard all the speakers tonight. And if the decision is to, for example, to submit a resolution, I know you don't want that to be stopped because of some opposition. We're being very open. We're talking to everyone. We welcome your input. And let's conclude this. I think I have two, one more individual or two. Cheryl Thomas Perkins, did you speak? I'm sorry. You did not. If you'll come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor Cox, City Council members. Excellent city staff and the world's best city clerk, Carol Lee Bates. Dear City, Victorville City Council members, it is my pleasure to offer these words on behalf of the High Desert National Council of Negro Women, N C N W, in support of the proposal to name the overpass that connects Nisqually Road and La Mesa Road in honor of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The N C N W enthusiastically supports this project because of significant contributions Dr. King made for justice and equality, which impact every community throughout the United States of America. As is the practice of the National Council of Negro Women since its inception in 1935, we gladly join the N double A C P, one of our longtime affiliates, which is among the initiators of the proposal, and the many other community groups which support this effort. Naming the overpass after Dr. King will have a significant cultural impact on the Victor Valley region in Southern California. It will pay homage to an exceptional civil rights leader and Nobel Peace Prize recipient who is also a national treasure. We know that Dr. King fought for equality for all people, and therefore he deserves this naming without question. This will be a worthwhile and historic move by the City of Victorville for many reasons, including the fact that there are no entities named after African-Americans in this area. The Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. overpass will provide our community with a grand landmark that will be seen by thousands of people who travel our streets daily and by the millions who drive on Interstate 15 annually. Already, the process of getting the overpass name for Dr. King has proved beneficial because it has united diverse members of our community who desire to have a constant reminder of the progress that was made by Dr. King's personal sacrifice and hard work to ensure that every citizen had the opportunity to live freely and enjoy fair treatment in this country. The naming will benefit High Desert seniors, students, and youth and the community at large. We ask that the Victorville City Council representatives work diligently with fellow Victorville citizens and city staff to name the overpass after Dr. King, which is a much deserved honor. Sincerely, Dr. Helena Johnson, President, High Desert, N C N W. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I bring this back for the City Council to have their discussion, did I miss anyone? I think I've covered all the cards. The whole idea of this meeting was to have a, to take the ideas and the concerns, to have a healthy, respectful discussion. We have done so, we are doing so, and you are to be congratulated for that. Thank you for your input. I'll bring it back to the City Council for comments.
Okay, I just wanna, my understanding was, is that we don't have control over state highways. Am I correct?
That's correct. One thing I'd like to try to clear up, I've tried a couple of times, hasn't worked real well all the time, is that the City Council doesn't have the authority to name the bridge or not name the bridge. The City Council could either make a request or a support a request from the community to erect a memorial sign in honor of Dr. King. The naming of the bridge is something that is handled by the state legislature. Naming of any highway structures is something that is handled by the state legislature.
Well, here's what I feel. Personally, I don't think we should change the name of the bridge at all. I think that if it were up to me, I wouldn't change the name. I think Martin Luther King is a great man beyond words. He's done a lot of great things. I've received so many phone calls and a lot of angry people that feel that I should represent Cesar Chavez because I'm Hispanic. And why aren't I being vocal on that? And my answer to that person and those people are that when I took an oath of office, it was to represent everyone. Everyone means no matter what race, creed, religion, party. This is a nonpartisan seat. And it is not my place to make those decisions and favor one over another. I think all these leaders are great. And it's turned into what some feel that hasn't, they don't want it to be a race war. Others feel it's that way. And I know a lot of the people don't want to say it, but that's what it's turned into. And that's sad. And I think that asking this council to take a... And I think that asking this council to take a side at this point, I don't think that we want to cause division in our city. And we don't have the money, first of all, to buy new signs. And I don't support changing the name of the bridge or a resolution or anything. I think we should keep it the same.
We've, let's start from right to left so that each council member will have a chance to comment. Mr. Kennedy, any comments?
Well, my mind is not made up. I think, I think there are a lot of parts to this. We're not going to sit here and make a decision tonight. I will tell you, I think from a freeway off-ramp standpoint would be, it would, we have to use Nisqually and La Mesa. Those are the names of the streets. We're not going to rename streets. On the other hand, I think commemorating not just Dr. King, but many other Americans who've been involved in civil rights. I heard a word tonight that really appeals to me, the connection, the connector. I think there are, there are ways to do this. I just, my mind is, you know, just covering a lot of different territory right now. But I don't think we can do anything about the fact that we're, we have an off-ramp to two streets, which is Nisqually and La Mesa. If we're going to do something else in naming and honoring Dr. King, and if it does involve the bridge, it's not going to be in the form of changing the names of those streets, I don't think. So I would not hope people would have that expectation. But I don't know what the answer is yet. I just don't know. Lot of ideas we need to think about.
Mayor Protem McKeckren.
Boy, I thought getting the interchange to be built was difficult. You know, probably most of you in this room don't even know how that occurred. And that's unfortunate because a lot of great people over the last 20 years, staff, council members, members not even of this community, but at Sandbag, are ultimately responsible for seeing this, the construction of the interchange come to fruition. And to see the daily progress of this interchange is quite satisfying because, you know, I was elected to get that thing done. I was not elected to name it. And this has been the most divisive issue I have seen since I've been on the city council. Someone talked about our community being diverse and unified. I can tell you, that is not the case. All you have to do is read today's paper and the paper over the last several weeks of all the differing opinions as to how this interchange should be named. And yet, this council has no authority to even name it. I mean, at best, we could encourage our state legislators to do it. But if any of you have an understanding or wish to have an understanding of what goes on in Sacramento, our area is represented by two Republican legislators, Assemblyman Tim Donnelly and Senator Steve Knight. At best, they get one bite at the apple a year. And I'm not so sure that they're going to use that to get an interchange named because it's overwhelmingly democratically controlled, the governor is a Democrat, and if a Republican Assemblyman or Senator wants to get something through, they're going to have to pay a lot to get it done. And in naming of an interchange is not something that they're going to necessarily hang their hat on. But I sit up here frustrated beyond belief. I appreciate all the input that we got tonight and all the input from the silent majority of people that are not here. Because if you, whoever spoke to our city clerk, she is wonderful. She's been working overtime just to make sure that we get all the communication as to this issue. But the fact of the matter is, is that at the end of the day, this interchange is for everybody in the high desert. It's not for any one particular group. And the traffic congestion that it will relieve is the purpose it's being built. It's not being built to recognize anybody. It's being built to make your lives better, to make your quality of life better. And I just, I have to say that I am overwhelmingly frustrated at how divisive this issue has become. Because although many of you in this audience are for that, I can tell you, for every single one of you, we have another opinion that we've received either via voicemail, email, or in person. And to the former mayor of Atlanta, Charlie Glasper, who at our last meeting said, "The last thing you wanted this to be was a divisive issue." Unfortunately, that's exactly what it's become. And quite frankly, I'm supportive of all your efforts to get the interchange named after whomever you want, whether you're here in the audience tonight, you've emailed me, you've talked to me in person, or you called me on the phone. But this council has no ability to recognize or name that interchange. At best, we could write or pass a resolution. At the least, we could send a letter in support. But again, I go to the reality of the politics in Sacramento, and it's not likely to get done. I encourage you to go talk to your Assemblyman or your state senator because they know. They know the realities of what they deal with up there. And, you know, they're trying to get their priorities taken care of, whatever those priorities may be. I think the last thing on their list is the naming of an interchange. And unfortunately, I know that's not what you want to hear, but at the end of the day, and I implore this council, our staff, this is not something for us to discuss any further. We've discussed it three times now, and we still have no ability to name it. I don't, we could pass a resolution or send a letter. It's not going to change the reality of what goes on in Sacramento. I apologize, very frustrating. I know you all would like to see this, but I have as many people who would like to see it not happen.
Councilmember, Councilmember Garcia, Gloria Garcia.
Yes. Being that I was born and raised here in Victorville, I do understand a lot about prejudice and all that. However, I don't feel that I ever experienced any of it, even though I was raised here. And of course, I do believe exactly like Protem, Mr. McCochrane, that the bridge was not built to be named after anyone. And secondly, again, we don't have the authority to even request it, to request, you know, for the name change or to see that it is done. Therefore, I don't think I have anything else to say as far as this discussion is concerned.
Thank you. First of all, I want to express my appreciation to every member of the audience who came forward and let their feelings be known, let their comments be known. We appreciate that. I am just shocked at the input that we're getting, one moment, at the input that we are getting as individuals, the number of people who have weighed in on this, the suggestions that have been made. I'm just, I'm just going to give you a couple. Very early suggestion was that we put it on the ballot, have a committee come up with individuals who deserve the honor and vote on it. Secondly, directed to the city clerk, what would that cost? And as I recall, if it's with a concurrent election, about $20,000. Could be more, could be less, depending upon the election. Went back to that individual that represented a group, and they quickly said they'd raise half the money. Will the other groups do the same thing? I tried to stop that discussion right away because if there's people deserving, they can't be on the ballot unless they raise money. And that's, of course, that's what we're here for, to make that decision. But that'll give you an idea of the numbers of people who feel quite strongly about this, that it should be local people who've had historical impact or effect. I have a lot of questions that I've directed to staff, all these council members have. We are discussing this. We're very open. We want to find a solution. And we're not trying to find a solution of appeasement that'll make you all think, "We're wonderful," and possibly vote for us again. We're trying to do the right thing. And I know that each and every one of you, in your heart and mind, believe that what you're saying is the right thing. We simply have a large number of individuals who feel just as strongly in what we're saying, what I'm saying to them, and I know that some of the councilmen have said. We want to make sure that we resolve this issue because, and I think where a majority of people agree, because the worst thing that can happen, in my opinion, is the city council adopt a resolution, send it to Sacramento, and have it killed. Because if that occurs, we're kind of locked out from considering this. And I think that we're making progress. I think people are beginning to understand the need to a recognition that we don't want to lock out the Martin Luther King or the Hispanic community or anyone else. So we have a lot of input from staff. We have a lot of input that's coming from other individuals. We don't have all the information. And I saw three hands, and I know that I'm going to, I'm going to call on the two individuals. But please, let's don't start the debate because when you speak, every one of you entitled to speak again, and we're here for another hour and a half talking about the same issues. But Charlie, you're on that committee, and I'm going to ask that if you would come forward, and please keep your comments brief. And thank you. Mr. Charlie Glasper.
Councilman McLeckron, I'm sort of disappointed in you trying to guess what Sacramento's going to do. I talked with Tim Donnelly, and he said that he would support this issue with us. Now, I think that you need to pass a resolution. I don't want you to name the, I don't want the council to name this overpass. I want you to pass a resolution and send it to Sacramento so they can act, either turn it up or turn it down. I don't want you to make no decision about naming that overpass. I want you to pass a resolution and send it to Sacramento. Vera, Tim Donnelly, and Steve Knight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you want to speak or do you want to reflect?
Basically said what I was going to say.
Okay.
It's better to put forth the effort and fail than to sit and do.
All right. This, I want to, we're going to, I'm sorry, we just have to close this out. I'm sorry. This, this option to rename the, rename the La Mesa and Nisqually interchange is not going to die, it's not going to go away. The council has requested a lot of information. There's more information that's coming from other individuals that have an equal interest in this issue. And we're going to do our best to resolve this as quickly as possible. And if it is a decision to pass that resolution, it is going to be on the agenda. It's going to be well advertised, and all of you are going to know that. And I assure you that because of the input that we're receiving from everyone, it's not going to just die. But this was to gather input. We have other individuals who want to put forth information. We have other individuals who have promised to submit data to back up why they believe the individual that they recommended should be named. And this is an issue that we're all struggling with. And I assure you that we will make a decision on this. I appreciate your input. I appreciate the courtesy that you've shown. This matter is closed for now. Agenda item number 21. This item was requested by, am I right?
Yes.
Councilmember Vias regarding the National Sunshine Transparency Week. Ms. Vias.
Yes, I requested that the city manager look into putting up a sunshine list on the website so it would help with transparency. Other cities are doing it, and it was encouraged. I think, Andre, you could speak a little bit to it.
Certainly. Every year, they do a sunshine, sunshine law week basically, and encourage public entities to review their sunshine laws, essentially their documentation, their accessibility for the public to see what's going on. Right now, there are several laws already on the book that require essentially open meetings. It's the Brown Act and the Public Records Act where if an individual wants information about anything that is transacted by the city, all they do, all they basically have to do is request it from the city clerk. And I would say 99% of the documents that pass into the city and that we transact business with are public documents and are available for the public to review. This transparency proposal checklist here, I think, would be in addition to what's already on the books, and I see no problem with it at all. I think it's a, it's a good idea.
Any other comments from the council? I personally think it's a good idea also. I didn't check with staff to see if it would, what it might incur. I know most of these things, because we have the Brown Act in California, we do most of them, maybe not all of them. I didn't try to really analyze each and every one of them, but I can tell you, I'm all for it. So, other comments? We lost Mr. Kennedy. Okay. The action then, if we want to adopt this as a, would it be a policy of the council? Madam City Clerk or City Attorney?
I think the, the direction would be for staff to review what's existing on the books and to supplement it with what's on the transparency checklist to the extent, to the extent it's not already covered.
Do we have a motion of that effect?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia.
How do I bring my screen back? Okay.
Wait a minute, I just, oh, never mind. Would you read, before you take the vote, Madam City Clerk, you want to read that motion to Councilmember Kennedy, who's rejoined the group?
That would be to place a sunshine list on the website, to the city's website, to, to supplement any information that is already available in order to encourage transparency.
Still in favor of it.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is agenda item number 22, policies on business card name badges. Whoever wants to speak on this.
Well, I think badges are a good idea. I have no interest in business cards, but I think badges are, are fine. I think that's something somebody can keep and hang on their wall and remember their service. But business cards are just too many dead trees of purpose.
Other council members want to comment on this?
I, I agree.
I agree also. Badges are, are fine.
I would recommend, and I provided some samples from other cities, that perhaps it would be appropriate to adopt a very simple policy similar to the one, I think, it's the last one. City of Tustin, the most important thing, I think, is just to have a policy somewhere that these aren't going to be used for personal gain, and that just protects all of the council members. And I think if you direct staff, we can put together a very simple policy and have it adopted.
So it's a, if I understand it, it's the decision of the council to move forward with badges and a policy? I see that, okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 23, increases to speed limits in school zones. This is a matter that the last meeting, Councilmember Vias requested a report from the city engineer on why increased speed limits. I, in reading this, I was surprised because I thought the council agreed. But I guess we have a policy that says, once it's suggested, it comes back to really see if we agree because it wasn't on the agenda. We couldn't technically agree. So I just recommend the council approve this so that they can get on with this report and get it back to the council. It's a good question, it's a good idea.
Mr. Mayor, actually, our city engineer is prepared to give a brief presentation just based on his knowledge. There wouldn't be any research necessary. You could have that presentation now if you like.
Has the information, that's fine. I didn't realize he was going to make a presentation. Thank you.
Didn't mean to surprise you. Normally, it would come back at a, at a future meeting, but this is information that, that he has on file.
What's up on our screens? Because that's not, has nothing to do with speed limits.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I'll keep this very brief. I don't have anything to present on the screen. I'll just briefly talk about.
Hey, who's doing?
Speed zones.
Brennan's back there doing this.
I know, I know in particular, there was an interest in school zones, and you're probably aware that the standard speed for a school zone is 25 miles an hour when children are present. And so, limits are set within so many feet of the school boundary. And there are certain locations, such as on Hook Boulevard, where we have flashers set on, on a time. on a timer, where it starts the yellow flasher to warn motorists about the school zone before the drop-off time, and then a little bit after the pickup time. But in general, the way speed zones are set, the constraints are really, they come from the federal law and also the state law. The federal law, there's a manual on the Uniform Traffic Control Devices that all 50 states have adopted and use, and that's an umbrella that we have to adhere to, and then in addition, there's also the California Vehicle Code, and they have very specific requirements for setting speed zones, and the way we do it is we, we actually have to measure the speeds of the traffic on a street, it's a statistical sample, and then we set the speed on the 85th percentile. So if you take 100 cars, you take the top 15 speeds out, and it's that 85th percentile speed, and then you're supposed to go to the nearest five-mile increment to that speed. And you don't round down, you go to the nearest one. So, say if you have 48 miles an hour, you'll round up to 50 miles an hour. Now, there is a provision where you can lower it by five miles an hour, but you have to justify that with an engineering report, and it's fairly difficult to justify, and sometimes the court may not uphold that unless there's a very good reason. And the important thing to remember is that for speeds to be enforced, it has to be backed up by this engineering and traffic survey that actually takes a sample of the speeds. And the other point I'd like to make is, many studies have been done on the effect of speed limit signs, and they actually have no effect on the speed people drive. The speeds are set according to the way people drive on a particular street. If we were to arbitrarily lower the speed limits on our signs, it really wouldn't have any effect on how fast people drive, and it wouldn't give us the ability to enforce the speeds. So, I, we can give a more detailed report on this if you'd like, but I just wanted to briefly describe how we set speed limits, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, so, we had an individual come and complain that, I think it was, they said that speed limit was 50 miles an hour, was that correct?
Yes.
In a school zone, but when school's on, it's not 50 miles an hour, it's 25, right?
That's correct, and that's, as an example, on Hook Boulevard, the speed limit is 50 miles an hour, based on the engineering and traffic survey, but in the school zone, it's 25 miles an hour. We don't have the ability to arbitrarily lower the speed limit for when children are not present.
So, when he said 50 miles an hour, he was talking about when school's out?
That's right.
Okay, well, all right, thank you.
Couple of questions. I've had a complaint about speed limits in front of a daycare center, and the individual saying that was a school zone because it's a preschool. Is the school zone defined in the state code?
It is defined in the state code, and I'm not sure about a preschool, I know that it can be a private school or a public school, but preschool, I don't believe that is a school zone, I think it starts with the K.
Also, well, I think it's something I'm just curious about, if you could find that answer. The other question I was asked by a phone call, does it make any difference if there is a fence between the school, school property, and the street or not?
No, not in regards to a school zone.
It's still a school zone whether there's a fence or not?
Right.
Okay. So, when children are present, not children on the sidewalk, but playing on the playground?
When children are present is a matter of interpretation, and I've heard different traffic commissioners interpret that different ways.
Okay. Well, it was a good question, we received good information, if there's any further information on that, I'll rect him to you, and thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Item 24, Bear Valley Road and Interstate 15 Traffic Circulation. The city council scheduled a joint meeting with the city council, city of Hesperia, to revisit the traffic circulation in the vicinity of Bear Valley Road and Interstate 15. I believe this came from Councilmember McCacken?
Correct. I had received, or had talked with Councilmember Mike Leonard from the city of Hesperia, he indicated that he felt that there might be an interest to revisit this issue by their council, so that is the reason for my request that we have the joint meeting. The, our previous city council unanimously approved this, the Hesperia City Council was against it on a split vote of three to two, but since things have changed over there, he felt that it would be worthwhile us getting together again, so that's the reason that I requested this. I know Sean has additional information that he can provide that would be a part of a joint meeting anyway, so I don't know how much you want to go into that, or...
I think it'd be informational, just for the council members that weren't on the council when it was last discussed, just to give a little bit of a history of the issue and the times that it's been looked at.
And if Brandon could bring up the-
All right, Brandon, you can bring it up now.
...presentation this time. Thanks. What I wanted to do was just to recap a little bit on what the city has done by, in focusing in on the Bear Valley interchange and improvements that are going to be needed to alleviate some of the congestion that it experiences. And, beginning back in 2007, Al Grover and Associates, who function as the city's consultant traffic engineers, were engaged to prepare some strategies associated with improvements to look at in the future, especially with development occurring, creating more impacts, such that those improvements could be identified and appropriate fees collected ultimately. And in addition, there was an interest by Caltrans to look at improving the northbound ramps, especially in the southeast quadrant, which is in the city of Hesperia, and there was even some shop funding identified at that time. The Caltrans process requires them to go through a project study report, and some of the data that would be put together by Al Grover would be useful for that project study Just to elaborate a little bit, over the years, the city has spent millions of dollars on this interchange. Back in the late 80s, I think it was, the bridge was widened to accommodate six lanes, I don't remember the exact cost. More recently, maybe about 10 years ago, the southbound off-ramp was widened considerably to provide four lanes. Again, that was all funded from the city of Victorville with no assistance from any other communities or any grant funding. Coming out of the Al Grover and Associates study, the recommendations were primarily lane widenings, the approach lanes to an intersection, expanding it to accommodate right-turn trap lanes or dual-left turn lanes at the various intersections. What I've listed here is just simply the intersections that are immediately related to the interchange and the frontage roads. Their study went further than that to look at other adjacent intersections and intersection improvements that they would recommend to improve the quality of the level of service. But the first bullet point is really the major one, they recommended that the northbound ramps get relocated to the west, and if we look at the next slide, the intersection of Mariposa and Bear Valley is, as I'm indicating, next to that is the current location of the ramps. The distance in between is very short, that means the queuing of cars waiting at a red light can tend to block an intersection, and those are the kinds of things that create the congestion out there. By abandoning this ramp location and moving it over to the orange location, that doubles the stacking space available and greatly improves the flow of the traffic as a result. You can see other improvements that were recommended as part of the study, additional lanes, this particular alternative even considered hook ramps that would go through the middle of the park and ride. This loop here is a loop ramp that would allow eastbound Bear Valley traffic to go northbound, as opposed to having to come down here, make a left turn. Any conflicting movement, the left turn movement, is time devoted to the cycle of a traffic signal, and again, reduces efficiencies. The old ramps then would be abandoned for the most part, but the relocation would have a major, major benefit.
Do you believe that if the success of the Esquali in relieving that traffic, that the studies are going to show that these identical improvements should be made, or would they be different?
I'm getting to that point, Mr. Mayor, but in answer to your question, it would require further study of the new traffic patterns that would occur after the interchange opens. It's too difficult to forecast how that traffic behavior is going to look like. More recently, the former city director of Public Works worked with KOA Corporation in conjunction with the city of Hesperia to perform a further study at the intersection of Bear Valley and at the I-15. One of the things that KOA looked at was to prohibit any and all left turn movements at the Mariposa intersection. While the left turns in all direction would be a major impact to businesses, that was still something that was up for consideration. Ultimately, the study recommended prohibiting east and westbound left turns at that intersection onto Mariposa from Bear Valley Road. Just to give you an example of that impact to a business, if I was northbound on the I-15, wanted to exit to go to, say, Marie Callenders, I would exit, turn right, and then I would be unable to turn left onto Mariposa Road, I would have to continue further east to Cottonwood, make a left turn, go north on Cottonwood to Monarch, make a left turn on Monarch, come all the way back to Mariposa Road, make another left turn to get to Marie Callenders. That would add an excess of a half a mile to my journey by not being able to make a left turn. While, as a, you know, traffic engineering, that makes sense to do, the impact to the businesses is something that needs to be evaluated. Their study also took a look at relocating the northbound ramps, and their proposal is in the next slide, and as you can see, there's two versions here, and it was intended to be a phased operation, the first phase being the construction of a loop ramp, almost identical to what Al Grover and Associates had recommended four years earlier. And then the second part would be to relocate the actual ramps themselves, again, it would abandon the existing ramps, move the new ramp location further away from the Mariposa intersection, thereby increasing the stacking, the queuing that would be available. This information was in, from the KOA study, was presented to city councils for Hesperia and Victorville at the joint meeting in, on April 14. And part of the presentation was the fact that the Caltrans had some million dollars in funding for construction, and that they were prepared to complete the design and the environmental work, but with a $1.6 million price tag for the project, it would need contributions from Hesperia and Victorville of $300,000 each, even though that work would really benefit the southeast quadrant in the city of Hesperia. The other phase to include the ramp relocation with the loop ramp totaled about $5 million, so the participation proposed was $2 million each for Hesperia and the city of Victorville. And at that meeting, as Mayor Portem McCacken indicated, there was a unanimous vote from the city of Victorville city council to move forward with a short-term pilot scheme, which would just simply prohibit the left turns at the Mariposa intersection, and then monitor how it performs, and if it doesn't work, then it would be permitted again. Hesperia's motion apparently then failed two to three, and at that point, there was no further work done on the project. Just to let you know, I did ask the District 8 Director last week if he could find out if there were still shop funds available for doing work in that southeast quadrant to improve the ramps. And as we touched on a little earlier, the interchange is due to be opened in another three or four months, the La Mesa and Esquali interchange. There is no question that that is going to dramatically change the traffic patterns that we see on Bear Valley Road today. It is too hard to predict how that is going to affect the study work that has been done to date on the improvements needed at the Bear Valley interchange, and so as a result, we would certainly recommend no further action, you know, heading towards the potential expenditure of certainly hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe millions of dollars, when the whole thing is going to change in a few months. We wouldn't even recommend any action probably until spring of 2014, simply because it's going to take at least six months for the public in general to get used to the fact that they've got a new interchange to access, their behavior's going to change, but it's not going to change overnight, it's going to get, take time for that to settle in. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Mayor Portem McCacken, this is your item.
I'm okay with waiting, I just don't want this to go away, and quite frankly, you know, the consultants, they like to convolute things, which is somewhat frustrating. The benefit to doing the loop for northbound traffic on the 15, as well as realigning the northbound off-ramp, northbound on-ramp, would be a huge benefit to the citizens of Victorville, not to Hesperia. And so I still think that that needs to occur, the, no churning left on Mariposa either way, I never was in favor of, and I think that that's ultimately probably what killed it with the city of Hesperia. But I'm okay with waiting until after the La Mesa and Esquali interchange opens, and we've had some time to adjust there, but I still think, and Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, I should be speaking your language here, the way those off-ramps and on-ramp, the off-ramp and on-ramp are aligned right now is not conducive to traffic flow, and if we were to move them westerly, it would definitely improve the traffic flow, even so much so that it wouldn't be a problem for anybody to turn left onto Mariposa coming off the freeway.
No question moving, the ramp location is a no-brainer, so to speak, it has just got to be done eventually. The need for it, the urgency for doing it, is probably deferred by the new interchange- The need for it, the urgency for doing it, is probably deferred by the new interchange opening. It will certainly improve the level of service there, but absolutely, it does need to be done.
All right, well, then, if I could just request, and I'll withdraw this item, is that we revisit this in a year, possibly? And see where we're at, or maybe June of next year?
I would like to kind of add an addendum, I think the very fact that this matter has been approached by the city of Hesperia, it may indicate that they have an interest. I think that as our representative on Sandbag, and with many of our road improvements and being involved in the interchange, I think that it ought to be understood by the city council, that while it's not a formal meeting, that it was certainly going to authorize Mr. McCackran to continue informal meetings with Hesperia's input, with questions to our city engineer, and so that when this issue is raised a year from now, we don't start all over. We're well underway, and we kind of know advantages and disadvantages, and in the meantime, we can weigh the effect that the Nisqually-La Mesa interchange will have on the traffic patterns.
Yeah, perhaps to that issue, Sean, maybe you and I can get together with Mike Leonard and the city engineer in Hesperia-
Absolutely.
-just to kind of kick this issue around and look to set it up for next year.
I would propose that, if that's okay with the council. I don't think it hurts and helps, I think it helps our ability to get out ahead of it, and I think it also enhances our ability to work constructively with the city of Hesperia. Objections? Okay. Sure? Go ahead.
That's correct.
No, no, we just clarified that. The bridge will be open in three or four months, and all the traffic patterns will change. And rather than wait a year to look at it, to begin looking at it immediately, we'll start informal talks. But we can't have any formal agreements because we don't know what the traffic patterns will be. It's very possible that it could be made far in advance, or it might be delayed for some reason, but at least we'll be out in front of it. That was the agreement that we've made.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for this member of the public, this is not the on and off ramps for the La Mesa and Nisqually interchange, this is to redo the on and off ramps at Bear Valley?
At Bear Valley, yes.
Exactly. Right, what we'll need to do is take a look at the traffic patterns and see when the appropriate time is to make these changes.
Exactly, it may be a lot sooner, may not, but at least we're not going to wait the year before we start. I believe we have, the next item is Agenda Item Number 25, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items on the Upcoming City Council Agenda. Last week, we started on my right, I feel a little left this week. Councilmember Garcia? McCackran? Twenty-
Item for future council-
I've lost, 25. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items for the upcoming city council agenda.
I had agendized a while back about what we were going to do about that road in front of the library, and you were going to come back and tell me if we could do, or take it, or find out, or get the owner to fix it.
You're right.
And I haven't, I just wanted an update on that.
Yeah, we don't have an update just yet, we are working on it, though.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Kennedy, no items? City Attorney, any items?
Have no items, no.
Okay. Hopefully, we don't have any staff reports.
Just a brief, very, very brief, couple of exciting events coming up.
Pause a five-minute break?
I will keep it very brief. I was actually going to mention that we have the best city clerk in the world, but someone beat me to it. On April 13, we have the Community Cleanup Day coming up, that's two Saturdays from now. The deadline to get people to sign up for that has come and passed. We'll still take volunteers, but they have to order t-shirts and things, so if you still want to do it, you can still do it, you may not get a t-shirt, you may get a t-shirt, heck, you can have mine. So, that's going to be a busy day for me, actually. In the evening, there's an event to benefit the St. Mary's Hospital Foundation, it's called Men Who Cook. Apparently, someone believes I can cook, so they asked me to come and be a chef. So, I will be making my mother's, actually, my grandmother's no-bake cookies for that event, and I'm going to hopefully not get them wrong.
It's 10 minutes till 10, no.
One last event that I'd like to announce is actually on April 20. It's called Chill at the Park, it's a youth resource fair. I'm guessing we probably don't have any teenagers watching right now, but just in case, they're invited, or if you know anybody who provides resources to the teens of our community, this is actually a group of community members working together with your youth advisory committee to put on this event. That is all.
Thank you, and good night.